Got my attention.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we proceed to roll call, I was reminded, a little housekeeping tonight, make sure whenever you're speaking to turn your microphones on so that the audio on Facebook and YouTube and the TV can pick your voice up. Item two is roll call.
Nelson.
Here.
Orison.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Onechel.
Here.
Hanson. Reed.
Here.
Moriarty.
Here.
Thank you. Item three is the consent agenda. Three A is a motion to approve the city council minutes of October 19, 2020, and October 26, 2020 special meeting. B licenses, approve renewal of Class C liquor license with outdoor service and Sunday sales for the Spencer Municipal Golf Course, and Class E liquor license, Class B wine permit, and Class C beer permit for C's liquor, both subject to final approval by the Iowa Alcoholic Beverages Division. C is a resolution authorizing permanent transfer of funds of budgeted transfers for the month ending October 31, 2020. D is a motion to approve the Griffin Trust distribution for 2020, $838.52, split evenly between the Spencer JC, Spencer YMCA, and the Head Start Program. E is a motion to approve sidewalk construction and assessment easements with Cory and Beth Ann Hopkins at 1105 11th Avenue West, and Debra Witrock at 509 West Ninth Street. F is a motion to approve amendment and extension to contract for sanitary landfill services with Clay County for July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. G is a motion to approve purchase of 14 handheld Raycom radios for the fire department for This is a CIP item. H is a motion to approve award of Renaissance Initiative Grants as recommended by the Renaissance Initiative Committee for $2,100 for Season Center Event Winter Wellness Event. First by Tracy. Second by Donovan. Questions or discussion on these items? Hearing none. Vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Onechel, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item four, old business. Four A is an ordinance repealing Title VIII, Chapter III of the Spencer City Code entitled Electrical Code and adopting a replacement Title VIII, Chapter III Electrical Code. Long-term planning committee has discussed this. This is the second filing.
So move.
First by Lauren. Second by George. Discussion or questions regarding this? Hearing none. Vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Onechel, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item four B is an ordinance repealing Title II, Chapter 13 of the Spencer City Code entitled Electrical Board and adopting a new Title II, Chapter 13 of the Spencer City Code. This has been discussed at the long-term planning committee, and it is the second filing.
I move the ordinance.
First by George.
Second.
Second by Lauren. Questions or discussions related to this? Hearing none. Vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Onechel, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item five is new business. Five A is a motion to approve a five-year lease with Quadiant for NeoPost postage meter and scale for the city hall for $153.78 per month. First by Tom. Second by Donovan. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Item five B is a resolution finally approving the grade order list, step plan recommended by Carlson Detman Consulting. I know it doesn't say here, but it has been discussed at a couple different Personnel Committee meetings over the last two to six months as we've been going through this process.
I move the first question.
First by George. Second by Tom. Discussion questions on this? Hearing none. We will proceed with the vote.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Onechel, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
All right. I'd like to thank everybody involved in the process. I know it was a long process, lots of meetings, lots of discussion, all the team members on the city staff, as well as elected officials who participated. We appreciate your time on that. Five C is a resolution establishing the position of the Solid Waste Administrative Assistant. This was discussed at the last Personnel Committee meeting. First by Donovan. Second by Lauren. Questions or discussion on this item? Hearing none. Vote by machine, please.
Nelson, aye. Orison, aye. Larson, aye. Onechel, aye. Reed, aye. Moriarty, aye.
Thank you. Item five D is a motion approving solid waste division transfer station hours change. This again was discussed at the last Personnel Committee meeting. First by Lauren. Second by George. Discussion or questions related to this?
When is this change going to go into effect if it gets approved? What are we talking here?
So, the change of hours would go into effect January 1st, 2021, and the creation of full-time position, I believe, would go into effect December 1st. Is that correct, Brian and Mark? Is that what we talked about?
I expect it to go at the same time.
Oh, January 1st, then. Decem-- okay.
Okay. How are we posting this to get the public to know the changes?
Here so we can hear me. So, we will do a social media campaign along with a press release and try to get the information out. We surveyed 14 different solid waste and transfer stations and landfills, and that's how we used the information to come up with the recommendation on that. We thought we covered the base as well. Again, we'll get it out on Facebook. We'll meet with our friends over here, probably have some ads, and try to do a press release.
Did you talk to many contractors to see what they thought about? Because it was 7:30, right?
Yeah. What we did was we ran a survey of actually what does come through the door. So, a random survey of activity on a daily basis. We had 1.5 customers between 8:00 AM and-- or before 8:00 AM. We had six customers after 3:30. On Saturday, we had 80 people or 80 customers that use the facility, and 30 of those were after 12:00 PM. So, we didn't run a survey and ask locally, is for-- or ask locally, but we did run a survey. So, try to take-- we tried to take the emotion out of it and just get what the facts were, what the people are coming through the door. The survey was done not-- it was done randomly at different times, so it wasn't like we just picked a peak shingle timer, not shingle timer. So, feel pretty comfortable with the recommendation.
Mark, I thought your department did an excellent job in checking everything out on this, and the fact that you came up with only going to cost $40,000 to add this other part-timer, especially where it's getting so hard for us to find hard time-- or part-time people.
Yeah, we really believe it's a positive for the division. We'll have some consistency there, and we're consistent with our normal policies. Anytime we fill a position, let's take a look at it, let's evaluate it. You know, do we need the position, or can we improve the position? Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any other questions or discussion related to this topic? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item six is Department head reports. We will begin with the Planning Department. Amanda?
Mayor, just have a quick update. We have a core working team. It's myself, Brian, Teresa, Mark White, and Don. We've been working through job descriptions and talking through options for the Planning Director position and what that might look like going forward. So, we hope to have a recommendation to bring in front of either the Personnel Committee or the Committee at the whole here sometime in November. That's what I have for the Planning Department.
Any questions? Thank you. B, Library, Mandy? Is-- Mandy's not on the phone, is she?
No, she-- we sent her report out to all of you.
Okay. I thought I saw an email. Is there any questions about Mandy's report that was sent out via email? All right. C, Fire Department, Chief Conian?
Community Council and city members, this evening, we're reporting that we had a little month of October, 35 EMS runs, dealing from everything from pregnancies to a little bit of alcohol, beers, seizures, to some difficulty breathing. This year, along with EMS, we're starting to track COVID in our COVID contacts. We had a fourth COVID contact patients, as well as having five different volunteer firefighters that have sequestered due to COVID in different points in time since we've been starting to monitor. Ambulance 104 had five different runs dealing with alcoholic-- alcoholism, as well as altered levels of conscious. 25 fire runs. Keynotes were a couple of major CO calls with Black Hills Energy, where we had the hospital come out and transport a few people. So, those out in TV land, please, if you haven't already gotten your house a Christmas present, buy a CO detector and put a new battery in your fire detector as well. It'll be-- it'll serve you well. Our special duties included four. One of the nice treats that we get to do every year is have Halloween, and this year we presented 340 individually wrapped bags of candy to the kids. We also did a couple of illegal burning stops along the way as well, and now we don't have to worry about that so much. Training included a couple of live fire attract-- attacks, doing some hose testing, as well as EMS skills review for our EMTs, and we have a couple of individuals in EMT school. And that's a quick report for October. Any questions? Good deal. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Chief. Police Department, Chief Warburton.
Good evening. The Spencer Police Department responded to 1,001 calls for service the month of October, and we performed 40 arrests. October 24th, the PD participated in the DEA's National Drug Takeback Initiative. The PD collected just over 70 pounds of unused medication, and that was dropped off down at DEA office in Sioux City. October 16th and 17th, the Iowa Great Lakes Hiring Co-op tested applicants for the law enforcement position through numerous law enforcement agencies up in the Lakes area. Sadly, we only had four people pass the testing, which is usually, we're fighting to make a top 10, so we only had four people test, but I anticipate that's due to the current political climate. October 29th, the PD, Spencer Police Administration, won the gold award for the People's Choice for customer service. So, I thought that was something pretty cool that we don't normally get recognized for. October 28th, the Spencer Police Association gave away grilled hot dogs, chips, and bottled water in a thank you event for the community to show our support or for their support to us in this last year. The Association gave away just under 600 hot dogs that day in about an hour and a half, so it was a good turnout by all. So, have any questions for me? You bet.
Thank you, Chief. Public Works, Mark?
Hello again. The month of October with recycling, we processed 76.45 tons, which is a year-to-date of 677 tons of recycling. Cardboard was 67 tons, year-to-date, 763 tons. The municipal solid waste coming-- or leaving the transfer station in the month of October was 998 tons, with a year-to-date of 9,676 tons. So, how does the COVID affect that? Well, Al had run some calculations recently, and basically through the COVID situation, and I always say that solid waste is kind of a barometer of the economy a little bit, depends on what's happening throughout with projects and et cetera. Garbage is down 15.5%, but the interesting thing is that recycling's only down 1.5%. So, we wondered maybe with the more convenient stops and the boxes at Walmart and at Hy-Vee. And by the way, we plan to replace the Hy-Vee solid waste or co-mingled recycling container with a new one, and after we had a little incident up there, we placed one of our yard boxes up there so we could continue that service. Doesn't have quite the shine the other one does, but it serves the purpose. Cardboard was down 11.1%. This is a pretty important announcement. We'd really like to thank Dan Hollander for 31 years of service at the Street Division. He retired last month. Dan will be known as a pleasant, steady, reliable worker, and he'll be missed in that position, and we'll move forward with filling that, and we'll have some interviews this week. At the Street Division also, we had to have the first snow event to knock the cobwebs and the dust off the operation and see how that went. We had to hurry up and plow before it melted, probably. We also have inspected the Christmas lights, screened compost at the tree site, and just continue, I think it's something I always say every month, and I probably shouldn't, but continue to squeeze in maintenance projects and as weather permits, and we're certainly getting a bonus week this week to-- for a few other projects we didn't plan on getting in. So, anything else? Any questions this evening? Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Parking Recreation, I believe Jared's on the speakerphone.
Yeah, good evening. So, we're currently working on installing four trailhead signs that we received through ClickOnIt Community Foundation grant about a year ago. One will be at Stally Park in the main parking lot by the shelter. The other one will be down by the Aquatic Center, tennis courts. Also, we'll be installing one at the Bill Hughesby Trail at the Oxbow Wildlife Area Parking Lot, as well as we're kind of identifying the Little Sioux River Trail that'll be placed at the skate park parking lot there. Another thing we had going on this last week and trying to get fixed up is we had a break in the main line of the irrigation system on Grand near Ninth, Tenth Streets. And there, working with Mark Glaner and the Street Department to try to get that repaired tomorrow, I believe, and then we can finish winterizing our irrigation system up on Grand after that. Ultimately, with Mark and Brian out of Waterway Park, been having some tile issues out there, so we're trying to get our heads wrapped around of what we need to be-- what needs to be done there to solve the water issues that that thing is causing, and we'll continue to work through that together. As you may have noticed, we started removing some plants from the downtown planters, and we'll be removing the plants from the hanging baskets up on Grand sometime later this week to try to get that taken care of while we have some nice weather here, too. We also continue to work on with the No Boundaries groups on the Flashpad and Rocket Slide project. You may have seen some of the Rocket Slide projects up on Facebook, so through their No Boundaries website, so we've been-- the kids have been really excited about working on that project. They've taken an inventory of the parts, started looking for contractors to get cost estimate for refurbishment, start looking at locations for that Rocket Slide, and then potentially having some design, landscaping designs at that location as well. So, more fun stuff to come on that project, and it'll be some project work on. We're also working on Pioneer Baseball League. I've been in contact with that league. They're still planning on moving forward with having a season next year, barring any more COVID issues, but the committee is going to meet near next week to discuss plans to move forward on having the team and the next steps we need to take to make that become a reality. And then finally, we've been working with Clay County Conservation Board on holding a fall fishing event out at Stally Park this Saturday, November 7th, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. Registration is required through the Conservation Board system, but it's-- people don't need to bring any fishing equipment. It's a pre-event. Family-friendly, just get out, enjoy the nice weather, and do a little bit of fishing out at Stally Park. So, looking forward to that. Any questions?
All right. Thank you, Jared. Golf Course?
Just one quick note from Brian, that he was able to obtain a water extension from the DNR today, so they will be able to continue to irrigate.
Thank you. City Attorney, Don?
Thank you, Mayor. Our level of activity in October and the time spent was fairly consistent with recent months. Nothing-- not one major issue going on. We've been doing work with personnel and HR and compensation, as Amanda mentioned. We completed the work on the Electrical Code that you're now processing. Did some things with Jared, and Jared's moving ahead with capital improvement projects, the WOW project that we hope to come up with. A request for a school speed zone on West 18th Street, excuse me, East 18th Street, triggered a review of our speed limits and how state law applies, and we may be coming to you with some recommendations there. And we had some zoning issues, including one this morning where a developer brought a proposal to the Board of Adjustment to use a type of metal siding that's currently not permitted in the code. That really wasn't something the Board of Adjustment could approve, so it will probably be coming to you after a review by Planning and Zoning.
Thank you, Don. Any questions for Don? All right. Item seven, Engineers Report, Ross?
Good evening, everyone. Quick project update on the West 4th Street Underground Improvement Project. Delos Construction has finished the pavement work on that job. West 4th Street was open on Saturday. Traffic control came down this morning, and what's left to be completed is seating and the need to finish up the pedestrian crosswalk signs. And then that project will be complete. On the 2020 Intake Replacement Project, Cory Jurgens is back in town. He currently has the north half of the East 18th Street and First Avenue East intersection closed to replace two intakes there, and then he has two others over on the east side of town, and that project will also be complete. He's hoping to wrap up before the weather conditions get really bad next week, so. And the only other thing I had was on the Fourth Avenue Southwest Trail Project, Lakeside Landscaping. Plan to start doing the seating on that job tomorrow, and then construction on that project will be complete also. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ross. Item eight, City Managers Report, Amanda?
Thanks, Mayor. A few items of note. First, City Hall will be closed on Veterans Day, November 11th, just a reminder for everyone. If you haven't seen yet through social media or in the newspaper, the Chamber has kicked off its Spencer's 150th Celebration Activities, so be watching the Chamber's website and social media for things that'll be going on throughout the next year. Brian and I met with Mayor and Lauren and Bill, Chairs of the Long Term and Budget Committees respectively, just to talk about the budget process, how we'd like to potentially present that, needs that the Council might have in reviewing that, and so we'll be continuing to work on that over the coming weeks. It feels like we just did a budget, and here we are doing another one, so that'll be coming to all of us rather quickly. I'd like to extend a thank you to Main Street and the South Grand Business Owners for Saturday. They put on quite an afternoon of entertainment for families on Halloween. The businesses open downtown, and then on South Grand, my kids have more candy than they will ever need in their entire life. So, thank you for that. Thank you to everybody who was able to attend. It was a really fun afternoon, safe. People were able to stay apart and still enjoy the day and the nice weather. COVID is still-- it's still here. It's still affecting us. It is within our ranks. We do have staff people who have-- who are out with COVID, or a spouse or children have tested positive, so we continue to be diligent on that front and keep putting parameters in place to try and mitigate that as much as possible. The last thing I'll say, tomorrow is Election Day. I think I say this every year, so to quote my favorite president, Jed Bartlet, and if you don't know who that is, you'll have to look it up, "Decisions are made by those who show up." So, please get out and vote, and thank you to everyone who puts their name on a ballot and puts themselves out for that type of ridicule and speculation, and that's all I have.
Any questions for Amanda? Thank you very much. Item nine, Mayor's Report. Just a couple items. We're going to have some nice weather this week, and the sun is setting earlier, and just encourage those who get out and use the trail systems and bike and walk on the street, please remember that the sun sets fast. We would encourage you all to wear reflective clothing and especially lights so that you're safe and the people driving around are safe as well. Snow is coming after this beautiful week of warm weather, and as Mark talked about, we had a little trial run recently with a bit of snow that came through. We want to remind the citizens that we clean the streets and the areas as fast as we can, but it takes roughly, I believe, 24-- or 48 hours, Mark, two days, to complete a snow event. Is that right?
By the time we do the pickup on Grand.
Yeah.
Plow the roads, and nothing else is around 78.
Okay, 78 hours roughly. So, just encourage you to be patient. We get to it as fast as we can, and if you've traveled to other communities during a snow event, I think our town does a great job, and we want to thank all those operators who are going to be out late at night clearing the roads for the citizens. It's probably a somewhat thankless job, but it's a-- we could not survive in the winter without it, so thank you very much. Capital projects and budgets, as you heard a couple times tonight, are coming around the corner. I would encourage all the citizens to reach out to your elected officials in your ward, as well as the two at large. This is the time of year when we start to prepare and plan for how we're going to spend the money in the next budget, which really means we're going to talk about projects and business of the city. And so, this is the time to engage with your elected officials and express any opinions that you might have. We'll be meeting frequently over the next three to four months, and while it's a long-- if we call it a season, budget season is long, but it's also exciting, I think, because we have big, meaningful discussions, so. And I would echo Amanda's comments, tomorrow's the day. It's the last day that you can vote. Get out and vote. Your voice matters, and your vote matters. I would entertain any questions. Hearing none, we will move on to item 10, Council and Committee Reports.
We have a special city council meeting scheduled for November 9th at 6:30 PM. This will be a closed session on purchase or sale of particular real estate. Then we have a regular city council meeting on November 16th at 6:30 PM.
All right. Thank you, Amanda. Item 11, I would entertain a motion to approve the bills and claims. First by Lauren. Second by Donovan. Any discussion or questions? Second by Donovan. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item 12, other opportunity to address the council. Would anyone like the floor? There's no students here tonight, so we can't pick on them. Anyone? George, go ahead.
Fall team for Spencer has had a very outstanding season, and they come up against a very tough opponent at the end here, but they didn't give up. They played right to the last play, and they were playing hard, but they had an outstanding season.
Sure did. Congratulations to the Tigers in all the fall activities. Anyone else? Hearing none. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. First by Donovan. Second by Tom. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Meeting adjourned. Have a great evening.